Statement before we do the Pledge of Allegiance. Good evening, we greatly appreciate our staff, council, and residents adapting to our teleconferencing format due to the COVID-19 pandemic. Tonight's meeting will be held under Minnesota. Pledge of Allegiance, good evening. Little feedback, sorry. Uh, let's see where I'm at. Thirteen D dot zero two one that permits a public body to hold a meeting via telephone or other electronic means due to the COVID-19 pandemic. For members of the public, the meeting is being livestreamed on the City of Wyoming YouTube page. The Wyoming City Council meeting will be recorded as part of the public record. After each agenda item is read and staff give a report on the agenda item, I will call upon each council member individually if they have questions on that particular item. If you wish to make a motion or second emotion, please state your name first. All votes on all items will be completed by a roll call to meet the standard for the state statute thirteen D dot zero two one. Thank you, and with that, we will do the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God.
Indivisible, just liberty and justice for all.
Alright, open forum, Mr. Linwood, do we have any questions?
We do not have any open forum.
Perfect, okay, we're gonna move on to approval of minutes number one on our agenda. To consider approving the minutes of the regular meeting of the Wyoming Minnesota City Council for June second, twenty twenty. If there are no questions or comments, we need a motion to approve.
Member Schilling moved to approve.
We have member Schilling moved to approve, we need a second.
Member Luger will second.
Member Luger will second that, we'll go around the room, member Zerous.
Aye.
Member Luger.
Aye.
Member Schilling.
Aye.
Member Jaeger.
Aye.
And Mayor Iverson is an aye, it does pass. Number two, consider approving the minutes of the work session meeting of the Wyoming Minnesota City Council for June tenth, twenty twenty, if there are no comments or questions, we need a motion to approve.
Member Schilling.
Okay, so we have, okay, so we have, uh, member Zerous is the first, uh, member Schilling is the second. Around the room, um, member Jaeger.
Aye.
Member Schilling.
Aye.
Member Luger.
Aye.
Member Zerous.
Aye.
And, uh, Mayor Iverson is an aye, it does, um, pass. The consent agenda, three, four, and five, does anybody wish to pull an item on the consent agenda? If not, we need a motion to approve, number three, four, and five.
Member Schilling make that motion.
Alright, member Schilling makes the first motion. Member Luger, are you the second?
Yep.
Member Luger is the second, I'll go around the room. Uh, member Jaeger.
Aye.
Member Schilling.
Aye.
Member Luger.
Aye.
Mayor, uh, member Zerous.
Aye.
And Mayor Iverson is an aye, it does pass. Our agenda, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, and eleven are reports of officers, boards, commission, and department heads. Uh, does anybody wish to pull an item for further discussion? Seeing nobody wishes to pull an item, we'll go ahead and move to communications. Um, that would be number twelve on the agenda, agenda, Chicago County Bike Spur Project Update. Would that be, um, Ms. Dumas? You're on mute.
Thank you, Mayor Members of Council. Uh, this is just a quick update on a project that we have been, uh, working on in Railroad Park. Uh, there is a proposed, uh, bike spur, bike trail spur, where we're going to have just a little jaunt off of the sunrise trail. Um, and that has now been approved by Chicago County, and we're actually gonna be starting construction on it tomorrow. And that's all that I.
That's exciting. Alright, are there any questions? And by the way, we are on page number ninety-five, um, on your, um, index, if you look at that or in your packet. Are there any questions from council? Alright, no questions, we're gonna move on to number thirteen, which is page ninety-eight. Um, City of Wyoming Minnesota DNR Grant Application for Swenson Park, and I believe that is Ms. Dumas again.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Members of Council. Uh, we just wanted to give a quick update on the, uh, that the city has been awarded the Minnesota Department Natural Resources Grant for Swenson Park, which is very exciting. And with this award, there are a few, uh, pieces that the city still needs to put in place just to, um, finalize all of that. So city staff is working, um, through that process now. Um, and the anticipated date, uh, for the award to actually arrive will be September twenty-first, after we kind of go through the process to finalize that award.
Alright, uh, my, so, uh, Ms. Dumas, could you maybe go through just really quickly for the residents that are gonna be watching this later on? Um, what are some things that we are going to, um, that we have put in there for that grant? And some of the amazing things we're gonna do to Swenson Park?
Yeah, so the proposed project is really focused on making the updating Swenson Park, but also updating it to be more accessible or, um, ADA accessibility, um, and making sure that our parks are really accessible to all residents. So we're going to be, um, not only updating the equipment, but then also adding some, um, accessibility components, such as, uh, concrete curbing around, uh, the playground, um, and making, uh, updates to the tennis courts. Um, those types of things are really gonna help make it the park more accessible, more useful to all residents of Wyoming.
I think that's exciting, are we gonna do any type of marketing around that? Have we kind of discussed how we're gonna announce it? And I'm sure the park board is just, or the, um, park advisory commission is just super excited.
Uh, we have not set on how we are gonna, uh, move forward with announcing that. Um, well, we absolutely want to be sharing that through our social media channels, on the exact strategy for how we're gonna do that, hasn't been set yet. Um, I think that would be a really great item for the park advisory commission to provide some feedback on, and see kind of how, um, they can also be a part of really sharing the message about what this park is gonna mean for our community.
Perfect, alright, any other questions from council members? No? Alright, I love it when I can see your heads when you're muted, that helps out quite a bit, so, alright. Um, we will move on then to new business, number fourteen on our agenda, that would be page one hundred in our packets. To consider Resolution twenty dash oh six dash five four, a resolution awarding the sale of three million seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar general obligation improvement bonds, Series twenty twenty A, fixing their form and specifications, directing their execution and delivery, and providing for their payment. Is that Mr. Erickson who is starting that, or Mr. Linwood? Oh, Paul's gonna do that, alright, Paul, sounds great, thank you.
Alright, thank you, good evening, Madam Mayor, Members of Council. This morning at ten thirty AM, we took, uh, competitive bids on your offering of three million seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars of general obligation improvement bonds, uh, your Series twenty twenty A. We had four, uh, bids, uh, with, uh, a number of underwriters rolling up underneath each of those syndicates. So a total of about twenty-five underwriters that were, that had played a part in bidding on your offering. Four total bids, I, I'm, by the way, I'm on a, the, uh, item called bid tab that was sent to you, uh, recently on, for your agenda, if you want to follow along, it's called bid tab. The, uh, winning bid was at one point three three percent by a company called United Bankers Bank. Um, that bid is about one percent or a hundred basis points less than what, than where the market was about four weeks ago when I was on video asking you to set the sale of bonds. So, uh, so a really good bid, uh, and significantly better than, um, we thought the bids were going to come in at. So again, that's United Bankers Bank at one point three three percent. And I'll just make a couple of comments here also on, um, the Moody's credit opinion, so each time that you go to market, we ask Moody's to provide a credit opinion, um, so that investors can look at, uh, some letters and a number and automatically decide the level of risk they wanna take with buying your bonds. You were affirmed at a double A three by Moody's, which is a, which is a fantastic rating. Uh, any rating in the double A category is good. Um, just for perspective, a double A three, your next notch up would be double A two, then double A one, and then the top dog, triple A. So you're just a few, a few notches out of the best rating possible. So a double A rating i- is, is, is really good, it contributes significantly to the interest rates you saw today. Uh, the two comment, uh, four comments that I want to read from the, from Moody's rating report, uh, two of your credit strengths and, and the two credit challenges that they cite. On your credit strengths, they, they say you're robust reserves and liquidity, and you're above the average resident income levels. On your credit challenges, they discuss your tax base is relatively small compared with higher rated peers, and your concentration of taxpayers. So the rating report is, uh, probably somewhere in your packet as well, it's a good read, and unbiased look at your management, governance, local economy, budgeting, finance, and debt. Um, so it's a, a, a very good read, so. Um, so my recommendation would be this evening to approve the resolution to, oh, you know what, excuse me, I wanna add one item. You asked, uh, you offered three million seven hundred and fifty thousand in bonds. Uh, those bonds were sold at a premium, what we call a premium, um, which isn't uncommon in today's market. It basically generates an additional source of funds, which is then used to reduce the amount that you borrow. So you went into the market today asking for three million seven hundred and fifty thousand. Yours, your, the par amount, uh, decreased so that you borrow three million four hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars today, rather than three million seven hundred and fifty, and that's represented in the, uh, the, uh, filled out resolution that you received from bond council. So with that, I'll turn it back to mayor and be having to take questions.
Alright, so I am gonna go around the room and, um, ask, um, if you should have any questions. Uh, we are gonna start with member Zerous.
I have no questions.
Alright, and member Jaeger.
Um, okay, uh, the reason the bonds went down, the amount we borrowed went down is because, uh, we're doing really well.
The, uh, member Luger, so without, without, uh, overwhelming everybody with too much bond mathematics and other things, um, what happens in a market like today, when bonds are offered, and it's really been happening for the last ten years, is underwriters are offering the bonds to investors at premium pricing. Premium pricing means additional dollars come back, dollars above, over and above what is needed to fulfill the three million seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar request. So those additional dollars at the issuer's option can be turned around and basically used to reduce your borrowing amount. So they act like a brand-new source of funds, they come into the deal, and then they're used to reduce how much you borrow. So it's, it's advantageous, obviously, to reduce your borrowing by about two hundred and some thousand dollars. Um, and so that's, that's basically what occurred today, so.
Okay, so, so then at the end of the day, when we, uh, start paying for the, the construction project, we will have three point seven five million available.
That's correct.
Okay, cool.
Or, or, excuse me, three point seven five million minus the cost of, of issuance, et cetera. But your point is well taken, the, the amount that goes to your construction fund doesn't change by reducing the par amount of bonds.
Okay. Thank you.
Alright, member Schilling.
I have no questions.
Alright, and member Luger.
No questions.
Alright, and Mayor Iverson, I have no questions. Um, I'm happy that we had very favorable, um, uh, sale, so that's very exciting to have that, so. Um, thank you, Mr. Simon, um, so with that, on number fifteen, we need to approve Resolution twenty dash oh six fifty-four, a resolution awarding the sale of three point seven five million dollar general obligation improvement bond, Series twenty twenty A, fixing their form and specifications, directing their execution and delivery, and providing for their payment. Um, I need a motion to approve.
Member Schilling make that motion.
Member Schilling makes the first, do we have a second?
Member Luger will second.
We have a second by member Luger, around the room, please. Um, member Zerous.
Aye.
Member Luger.
Aye.
Member Schilling.
Aye.
Member Jaeger.
Aye.
And Mayor Iverson is an aye, it does approve, it does pass, I'm excited for that. Number sixteen.
Mayor Iverson. I, I apologize to interrupt, um, we did have a quick change in our agenda that we updated last minute that, um, for our, under our communications, that our chief Hoppy would like to give the council an update on the status of the twenty twenty stagecoach days.
Sorry, that was my fault, yep, so are we gonna go to number fourteen in the communications? Alright, you're on, Paul.
Madam Mayor and, uh, State Council, we submitted a communications today, uh, to you relative to stagecoach days. Um, as you guys are aware, the stagecoach days is, uh, put on and hosted by the Fire Relief Association. And we've been in discussions, they have been in discussions for, um, since the start of COVID on, you know, what is our plan gonna be, how are we gonna, um, how are we gonna address stagecoach days? And we, uh, we wanted to really hold off, um, as long as possible before making the final decision, uh, relative whether stagecoach days was gonna happen or not gonna happen. We've, you know, we've really looked at, uh, Minnesota Department of Health recommendations that have been coming out, we've been looking at what other communities are doing, um, we're watching what this, you know, the state fair has done, um, you know, and so that all went into kind of the decision of what the Fire Relief Association Board, uh, made for final recommendation. Um, so the recommendation has been to cancel stagecoach days in September, uh, twenty twenty, not only for, um, you know, to really look after the health and well-being of our community, because social distancing would be quite difficult, um, in an event like that. But also because part of how they fund the stagecoach days is through community donations. And I think we want to really set, uh, an example for our community that we're here to really support, um, our businesses, our local businesses, and, uh, we wanna be good stewards to them as well. And I think with, um, coming off of, you know, the COVID restrictions and seeing, um, those businesses just starting to reopen, uh, we really wanted to be conscientious about not reaching out to them, um, and asking them for donations this year. Uh, we think that we'd rather have our businesses really, uh, focus on, you know, um, on their continued improved position in the economy right now, rather than, um, asking them to support the, the community event. Um, and so for those two reasons, the, the Fire Relief Association, um, uh, has made the recommendation that we cancel stagecoach days for twenty twenty, and then we resume in twenty twenty-one. And I really do think it's a very responsible decision, not only from, uh, a health perspective, but also, um, really taking into consideration, you know, our businesses, uh, and being good stewards to them, and, and supporting them, um, as they reopen and, and rebound from, you know, some economic challenges that they've had, and they're just starting to rebound, and we wanna make sure they stay on a good track. So we wanted to give, uh, the council kind of the heads-up first, and ability to ask maybe some questions relative to that before we disseminated, um, to the general public.
Chief Hoppy, I have a question, and I'm sure it was a very, very hard decision for the Fire Relief, um, Association to have to cancel this. Um, they really enjoy it, the city really enjoys it. Um, my question would be for the fireworks. I think, um, it's something that we know just about everything has been canceled, right? Every fun part of summer has been canceled. Is there any way that we could consider finding a way to still be able to social distance and have those fireworks? And I'm not sure how that would work, and I'd be more than happy to, to be a part of that, um, discussion. Um, I'd like to see it off the water tower, you know, that'd be kind of fun. Um, off of my house, maybe, I don't care, but something where everybody could see it, and, and maybe off a building that's metal and won't catch on fire, I don't know, but, um, I'd like, I'd like a little, I'd like to bring a little bit of something of normalcy, um, to our city.
So I, I, there's, there's two additional topics, I think, um, that haven't been completely eliminated yet. That is, uh, wanna be in the parade, you know, and is we still able to do that, something that we just started, I think, uh, based on how parade works, and people kind of gather in their own property, uh, there might be a lot more opportunity to, um, abide by that social, what we call cluster social distancing, where the core families can, you know, stay within that six feet, but you're clustered away from, you know, your neighbors per se. So I, I think that still might be under discussion a little bit, we haven't necessarily take a hundred percent cancellation on, on the parade as a whole, we're still gonna look at that. Uh, fireworks was something that we've also talked about as staff, and, and I know Kelly had, Ms. Dumas had a really, um, good idea, uh, that we're gonna explore. Um, we, you know, considering that, that, uh, Goodview Park is our largest park, and we have all kinds of soccer fields and all kinds of space, uh, we're looking at the possibility, and we've seen other communities do this, and, and Ms. Dumas was real good about bringing up this suggestion of creating like circular family pods that we can, you know, paint on the ground, um, and then have families kind of cus- cluster in those circular pods, um, and then create enough distance between each pod that I think we can be effective in, um, social distancing, because during a fireworks, different than a, a community event concert, um, people kind of come together, they sit in one spot, we don't have a lot of co-mingling throughout the event, so I think it's a lot more, uh, easier to accommodate the social distancing responsibly. If we kind of grid out maybe that large soccer fields and create kind of family cluster pods as recommendations on distancing, um, and then most people are stationary for that event, so they come, they're stationary, and then they get up and they leave. Um, and so being such a large area, we, I think we can really separate and, and create visual recommendations, um, to accommodate social distancing, that, uh, we haven't necessarily taken that off the, um, the table completely. I think that's something that we can still put on as a city organization in conjunction with the fire relief, uh, and then also the parade is not quite off the table yet, but the stagecoach functions of, you know, the beer garden, the concerts, uh, the bouncies being one of the big conversation pieces of how do we sanitize the bouncies between, um, kids jumping and families in and out it, and some of those, um, those things. So as of right now, stagecoach, the event is canceled, but I think we're still open to some additional discussions relative to a parade, and definitely, um, I think the fireworks is something at a minimum that we can accomplish and still be, um, responsible, um, as far as, uh, social distancing and economics.
Okay, I'm happy to hear that that's not off the table, whatever we can kind of figure out. So, um, you guys are the best at logistics, so looking forward to, to hear what that might be. So, uh, any other questions from council members? I'm gonna watch you shake your head unless you wanna mute. Is that, no, no, Joe, do you have any?
No, no.
Lynn, alright, Linda.
No.
Alright, so, um, thank you for that, I think it'll be a positive, something for us to look forward to if we can definitely go through that, so appreciate it. And sorry, I skipped over fourteen, um, Chief Hoppy. Alright, um, we are on agenda item number sixteen, to consider res- Resolution number twenty dash oh six dash fifty-five, a resolution writing up uncollectible escrows as of twelve thirty-one twenty nineteen. Mr. Linwood, I believe you're taking this item?
Yes, please, Mayor. Mayor, Members of Council, um, this was an item that was, that came up through as part of our two thousand nineteen financial audit. It was identified by Bergen KDV, um, that the city still had multiple escrow accounts that had not been collected, and a lot of those being, um, quite, quite old, and other ones that have become to a point where either they were uncollectible due to the time that had lapsed, or, uh, potentially that the companies that applied for them had gone through bankruptcy, or developments never happened, um, due to some of the economic difficulty back in the two thousands. Um, you'll see, there is a resolution tonight that's been prepared, um, to identify these different escrows, and you can see that they range, uh, in different time. Um, the escrows essentially come from any time there's an application for, um, different components, whether it's conditional use permits, home occupations, interim use permits, rezoning applications, um, site plan reviews, subdivision applications, or variance applications, that's when these escrows would go into, in, to effect, and that would be utilized for city staff, legal, and engineering. Um, you'll see tonight that there is the, the total amount in this resolution that is attached, um, that there's a total of a hundred and twenty-one thousand eight hundred and twenty dollars from, um, the duration of these, uh, escrows, um, combining since I think as early as two thousand and one. Um, as part of that, um, we would be collecting those, uh, collecting those, and those outstanding, uh, balances would be written off using the capital revolving fund. Um, that is what our financial, um, finance director, Hannah Lynch, has recommended, along with, um, some conversations with our auditor. So with that, I will stand for any questions.
Alright, Mr. Linwood, I'm gonna start. Um, it looks like a lot of these, again, were kind of doing that during that, um, economic downturn that we had, correct? So, um, things that, that made it very difficult to collect on.
Cr- correct, and I can't, some of them are, um, are past, some of our staff that are here, but right, there are definitely some that staff has identified as we went through these, as the auditor presented them, as, um, you know, developers that have gone bankrupt, um, actual, you know, businesses that have gone bankrupt. There are, there are two escrows on that list that, um, were inadvertently placed on there, one for Paxmar, one for Cherry Hill, and those are, um, still definitely collectible, and the Paxmar amount is actually lower than is presented tonight at council, it's, um, about eight hundred and twenty-six dollars, and staff will continue to collect on those too, since those are, uh, present. Um, but otherwise, uh, the rest of these at this point, due to the, the duration, they've been outstanding, or those other components, and as far as the companies not being around, or, or bankrupt, or the developments basically went, you know, didn't move forward.
Okay, and if I look around the computer screen and all the employees that we have, I'm gonna say that, um, the question might be, why weren't they removed sooner? Um, I'm gonna just kind of look around and say everybody's been kind of new, we have new accounting, and I shouldn't say new, but compared to when all of this was going on, so it's kind of nice to see that we're cleaning this up, and, uh, and no fault of current staff or, um, any of our, um, people that we use for our finance, correct?
Yeah, I, I think, I think these, as you can see, a lot of them are quite, quite old, I can't say why that, you know, the collection process on them, I'm not really sure. Um, otherwise, right, there, there's a duration of the time when they should have been more intermittently written off, and not essentially, we, you know, brought them all to council now, but it's a part of the audit process, and it seemed pertinent to do it, and it was a recommendation from our auditor, and, um, I think it was important just to get it done, uh, tonight, so that's why it is, it is here for council.
Alright, and I am gonna go around the room and ask, um, for further questions. Um, member Schilling.
Uh, I have no questions, Mayor.
Member Luger.
I have no questions.
Member Jaeger.
Other, uh, I see the last, the last one that we're, that the last escrow we're writing off is two thousand and thir- from two thousand and thirteen. Are there any, any other escrow accounts after two thousand and thirteen that will be problematic?
Not, this is the, the list when, when gone through, through our finance, uh, finance and staff, that right now, this is everything that's essentially outstanding and uncollectible. We believe everything, um, else that we have right now is, is current, so we're not anticipating having anything, and, um, staff sends, uh, monthly invoices right now through our processes, uh, to our developers, as if in fact their escrow lapses and there are, um, bills that are outstanding, so we don't, we don't anticipate anything else moving forward, no.
Okay, and besides the monthly invoices to the developers, what other steps can be taken so that this doesn't happen again?
I think, I think that, that just, uh, a watch on these escrow accounts, um, that's, that's a task of our accounting clerk, that, um, she is evaluating these as we receive bills from our, um, different, uh, consultants, whether it's engineering or legal, and that, um, we're continually evaluating these and watching these, and then, like I said, they are being sent, um, those invoices. If it comes to a point where, um, we're not receiving payment, um, there is an opportunity to have those go, um, if it was a potential taxpayer to be able to assess those, or else if we needed other components where they were, uh, not paying those invoices, we would look to our legal counsel, um, to move forward with that process. To move forward with that process.
Okay, thank you.
All right, and members there was.
No questions.
Perfect. All right. So with that, we are going to need a motion. A motion to approve number sixteen, a resolution number twenty dash oh six fifty five. A resolution writing off uncollectible escrows as of twelve thirty one twenty nineteen. Do we have a motion to approve?
So move by members there was.
We have the first motion from member zero S. Do we have a second?
A second.
We have a second by member Luger around the room, please. Member Jaeger?
Aye.
Member Schilling?
Aye.
Member Luger?
Aye.
Number zero S?
Aye.
And Mayor Iverson is an aye. It does pass. Number seventeen, to consider and approve the twenty nineteen City of Wyoming audit. Presentation Bergen KDB is Ms. Lynch, are you doing that? Are we having Nancy? It looks like Nancy's on muted, so she'll be doing it.
Yes, Madam. The council, thank you for giving me some time tonight to go over the results of our audit and I'm going to share my screen. If that's acceptable. Oh, it says it's.
Oh, one second. I'll I'll make sure that you can.
Okay.
You want to try that now, please?
Yep, now it's gonna work. There we are. Can everyone see that? Okay, so what I did was pull the highlights out of the booklets that you received and put them into this PowerPoint presentation just for. Ease of following along. So to start out. I can get my presentation to move. There we go. I'd like to talk about the independent auditors reports that we issue. So first and foremost, it's our responsibility as your auditors to issue an opinion on your financial statements. And in that opinion letter, you'll find that in your financial statements, it talks about the fact that these financial statements are management's responsibility.
And it was our responsibility to audit those and express that opinion. And what we're issuing for the year end, December thirty first, two thousand nineteen. For the City of Wyoming is an unmodified opinion, which is the best that we can offer as your auditors. It provides assurance that financial statements are fairly stated in all material respects based on the results of our audit. So it's a clean opinion, if you will. In addition to that letter, we have a letter related to government auditing standards. So because of the funding that you receive. We're required to take a closer look at compliance and then also internal controls. Based on the work that we did, we had no legal or no compliance findings related to government auditing standards. And also no significant deficiencies or material weaknesses in internal control to report. So congratulations on that. And then our final independent auditors report is related to Minnesota legal compliance. So the Office of the State Auditor has seven broad categories that they ask us to look at and report on as part of the audit. And based on what we looked at and tested, there were no legal compliance findings for two thousand and nineteen. And I just wanted to point out that last year when we completed the audit, we did have two legal compliance findings and both of those were corrected for the current year. So the staff took care of the issues that we saw last year. Moving on then to some of the financial highlights for the year, starting with the revenues in the general fund. We have a five-year perspective and we have this for most of the information that I'm presenting tonight and we're really just going to key in on two thousand and eighteen and nineteen. But I think it's important to note here that if you look at two thousand fifteen compared to nineteen. Revenues are very close to the same, decreasing about fifty fifteen thousand dollars overall. If we do key into eighteen versus nineteen, you can see an increase of about three hundred and seventy six thousand dollars or about nine point two percent. That increase coming in a couple of categories. First of all, in taxes and special assessments, that increased about two hundred and forty two thousand. With an increase in the general funds levy. And then the other larger increase that you'll see there is licenses and permits right below that. Increasing about eighty one thousand dollars just with increased building activity in the city for the year. Switching gears then to the expenditures in the general fund. You see an overall increasing trend with your expenditures for the general fund. And if we look at two thousand eighteen versus nineteen, those numbers did increase by about eight hundred and sixty seven thousand or twenty four percent. Couple areas contributing to that. First of all, public safety, up about a hundred and thirty six thousand. There was an additional part-time crime analyst position added. You had cost of living increases in your salaries and then also an increase in fire calls for the year compared to the prior year. And then the other large increase comes in the capital outlay line, which is toward the bottom there. That increased from two hundred and ninety six thousand. All the way to eight hundred and ninety seven thousand. Two thousand and nineteen was a year where you saw several large purchases, a tanker truck, a chassis, and also some other vehicles. So that accounted for the increase there. And I think the city does plan, moving forward, to separate some of that capital from the general fund. And I think that's important to notice here how that one category can significantly change the. The overall expenditures in your general fund. All right, and we have some pie charts to take a look at that same revenue and expenditure information and. Put them out as a piece of the total. So when we look at your revenues, you can see that. Taxes and special assessments make up the primary source of revenue in the general fund at seventy eight point eight percent for two thousand and nineteen. If we compare that to two thousand eighteen, it's a very close to the same. It was eighty point one percent from that year. Other categories very consistent as a percentage of the whole. A little bit different picture when we look at the expenditure side of things. Public safety is your largest. Expenditure function and was in the previous well, but the capital outlay being so significant in two thousand nineteen. Is really highlighted here, that piece of the pie being nineteen point seven percent of the total compared to. Eight point one when we look at two thousand and eight. Next chart, we take a look at your general fund budget to actual information. So I think this is important to see as the budget is something that the council approved and management executed. So if you look to the bottom line, you can see that the original plan was a small increase in your fund balance, about fifty five hundred dollars. The actual fund balance decreased by about nine hundred and thirty seven thousand. Several things playing into that. First of all, your revenues were over budget by about two hundred and sixty eight thousand. Expenditures also over budget. That was about three hundred and thirty four thousand and then transfers in and out also had some significant variances. And primarily, the decrease in the fund balance relates to a nine hundred and fifty thousand dollar transfer. That was made to that capital improvement revolving fund. So kind of moving the the capital portion of the general fund out. And that transfer was made as the fund balance did exceed the minimum requirements. And we'll look at the fund balance in a couple of slides forward. If we dig a little deeper into the variances that you see in your revenues and expenditures. Like I mentioned, revenues were over budget by about two hundred and sixty eight thousand, which is a six point four percent variance. Three categories contributing to that difference. First of all, licenses and permits over budget by about ninety one thousand. Having to do with that increased building activity and a conservative budget in that area. Intergovernmental revenues over budget by about a hundred and nine thousand and that is due to the Polaris Industries abatement that comes from. And flows through the city from the county. And then finally miscellaneous sources, which includes investment income, was over budgeted by about sixty eight thousand. Due to the investment income activity at the end of the two nineteen year. Similarly to revenues, expenditure chart that looks at the details. Overall expenditures over budget by three hundred and thirty four thousand dollars that I mentioned, which is about seven point nine percent. And all of that coming from the capital outlay difference that you see there. So capital outlay being three hundred and thirty one thousand dollars over budget. Based on those purchases that we already talked about. Other categories really vary to what was anticipated in the planning stages. Then one last chart in the fund, taking a look at the overall fund balance. And when we compare two thousand and eighteen and nineteen, you can see that it did decrease by that nine hundred and thirty six thousand. Your policy outlines not less than fifty five percent in the fund balance related to the two thousand and twenty expenditures. And when we calculate that out based on what is remaining there after the transfer, that's about sixty nine point nine percent. So even with that significant transfer for capital in the future, you were able to exceed that minimum set by policy. This next chart takes a look at your tax capacity, tax capacity rate and tax levy. And I think this is an interesting chart to see. The line that starts in the middle and goes to the top is your tax capacity. So this is your values of the property within the city, if you will. That number has increased thirty three point nine percent since two thousand and fifteen. And then if we look at the bottom line, that's your tax levy. Pretty flat over the last five years, increasing just four point one percent. So the increase in the tax capacity versus the small increase in the levy. Has allowed the rate to decrease from fifty eight point seven percent down to forty five point seven percent in two thousand and nineteen. Moving on then to your enterprise funds. First of all, your water operations are shown here. Operating revenues were down about six point eight percent in two thousand nineteen, just due to decreased usage in that fund. Operating expenses actually increased due to an increase in the pension expense and then also meter expenses. So overall, you did have an operating loss of just under a hundred and nine thousand dollars for the year. And we show your operating income and a loss in two different ways to give you a little bit different perspective. One with appreciation and one without. And depreciation is that non-cash expense. Writing off of your assets over their useful life. So you can see, if we factor that out, you do have an operating income in this fund. So basically, that's an indication that your fees are covering current operating costs, but not allowing for significant savings for the. And when we look at the overall position of the water fund, you can see that did increase about seventy five thousand dollars for the year. And the bottom portion is the unrestricted net position, which is what's available for future, increased by about a hundred and fifty two thousand dollars for the year. Next up, we have your sewer funds. Operating revenues in this fund also decreased about fifty four thousand dollars. Operating expenses up here, part of it, again, due to the increase in pension expense. Part of it had to do with increased repairs and maintenance costs. So you've had, again, an operating loss. We include that depreciation in there. And pretty significant compared to the loss that you experienced in two thousand and eighteen. Again, when we factor out depreciation, this fund did have an income. You have a little bit different picture when we look at the overall position of this because it did decrease. Based on some transfers and non-operating items. Bottom line, two hundred and seven thousand dollar decrease in the position of the fund. The unrestricted, which again is what's available for future, also decreased and that decrease was about fifty six thousand dollars for the year. And then finally, your surface water fund. Revenues, if we look at each of the five years, pretty consistent. You didn't have a small increase for two thousand and nineteen. But a very large increase in your operating expenses. There were increased engineering costs, increased depreciation. Storm and and surface water funds are difficult to cover operating. And when we look at the operating loss that you experienced, it is the highest that you've seen in the five years that you're looking at here. And even when we factor out depreciation, the fund pretty much just broke even. So with this one, I would recommend that you take a look at your fee structure. And make sure that they are appropriate and covering the costs to do business in the surface water area. And again, similar to sewer fund, a decrease in the overall position of the fund. With that unrestricted staying pretty flat from two thousand eighteen to nineteen and decreasing significantly if you look back to where it was in two thousand and fifteen. That is the information I have certainly open to taking questions.
All right, um, we will go around the room. I do actually have a question. I believe Mr. Linwood or Nancy, maybe you can answer this as well. So with some of those funds and with the depreciation in having a loss. Can you maybe just describe, again, we have people watching, so it's always kind of nice to know. Why it's important for those funds, what happens if we don't save through that depreciation? Maybe just kind of a walkthrough, just high overview of. Maybe why we don't want to have a loss in that fund. I don't know. I'm just kind of a little more clarification of those losses when we throw in the depreciation.
Do you want to take that, Rob, or do you want me to take that?
Nancy, do you want to? Do you want to start, I guess, the auditor and then I can get kind of the staff if that's okay?
Yes, yes, that's perfectly fine. So when we look at the enterprise definition of an enterprise fund is that it's self-supporting. So supporting not only current operating costs, but also replacement costs for the infrastructure that you have. And we do understand infrastructure is significant in those. So sometimes it's not possible to charge a fee to cover all those costs. Little require then when upgrades are needed and additional infrastructure is required, will require debt. To be issued to cover the costs if there isn't a savings there for that. So that's why we like to look at it both ways. Because different local governments have different perspectives on the. The user should be covering as far as current and future costs.
Thank you, Nancy. And I think that would, you know, I would echo with the the council. This has been consistently in regards for the depreciation. And then on the other side, some of that pension fund, at the end of the day, the 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 accounts are still. You know, showing, you know, revenue. We saw a little bit more of a loss in the sewer sewer that was largely due to that. That transfer, the hundred and seventy five thousand for that water tower that we did again in two thousand and twenty. But I think we'll, as a staff, we'll continue to monitor this and and look at our rate studies to make sure that. We're really not too far off in regards to those appreciation and pension, but at the end of the day, the water and sewer, we're still profitable. Public Works is still going through some of these accounts in regards to the water. And analyzing some of those commercial accounts replacing meters. So we anticipate that the water will continue to improve as far as its performance. And then we continue to work with the joint sewer plant as they do. You're aware that there are some capital components that we are right now. As the city has a piece of that, that twenty three point two percent that we factored into our rate study that. We'll continue to monitor some of those improvements and necessary improvements we have here as well at the city.
Okay, thank you. I do know that one of the big things that we've worked on in the last four years is. Making sure that we plan for that future. And so we don't have any surprises down the road like we were faced on, on, you know, the last. I don't know, the first couple of years that I was on council, I know that. So. We worked really hard on keeping it transparent and planning for the future. So I do appreciate those definitions and. Why we do what I, what we do as a city that we plan for. So. That's, that is all my questions. I will go around the room and ask if there are any more questions. Member zero S.
No questions.
Member Luger?
No questions.
Member Jaeger?
I have a couple of questions. On page eight in the general fund expenditure. Public safety. How much of public safety is building and zoning?
We're looking at this one?
Yes.
Okay, so that's the two thousand and eighteen expenditure.
Right, there's nothing in there for building and zoning.
Right.
Last time I was told that building and zoning is incorporated in public safety. So I'm asking how much is the police and fire and how much is building and zoning?
At the top of my head, I don't know those percentages. I certainly could look them up and get that to you if you would like to.
Yeah, I'd appreciate it.
All right, member Jaeger, is that all your questions?
I have one more on page nine. Okay, an actual amount expenditures exceed revenues by sixty six thousand three oh four. All right, you got that. Where where was the money taken to cover that deficit?
From the fund balance.
Okay. And the reason for that deficit, was it mostly the crime analysts?
Actually, public safety was under budget. So the biggest reason for the variance in the overall expenditures was in that capital outlay line. So there were some things that were purchased that weren't part of the budget. But the funds were available in the fund balance. So there were some things that were purchased that weren't part of the budget, but the funds were available in the fund balance.
Okay, basically, capital, I know the fire truck was purchased in cash. So these are other purchases that were not budgeted for in capital outlay. Okay, that's how I think. Rob?
I think there's a question. Be part of the, the, that cash that was used to purchase that tanker would be that capital outlay component though, correct Nancy?
Yes, it would be. It would be included in there. Yep, yep.
Okay, but would that all result in the sixty six thousand dollar deficit? I mean, because that was just like, I, I, I'm, maybe I'm, I'm visualizing this the wrong way because I thought that was just straight cash.
It's, it's still, Nancy, and I don't want to interrupt you. It's still essentially based on that, that we, when we did those expenditures, that it was purchased early in turn our capital improvement plan. It wasn't inclusionary in that budget. So even though it was still cash, it's still coming out as that capital fund and essentially not part of that budget cycle. So it's showing up as expenditure that wasn't budgeted.
Okay, right. But it still was available in the fund balance to cover that.
That's all I had. Thank you.
All right, member Schilling.
I have no questions, Mayor.
All right, so we're still on number seventeen and we are going to need a motion to approve the two thousand and nineteen City of Wyoming audit. Do we have a motion to approve?
Member Schilling, make that motion.
We have a member Schilling for the first. Do we have a second?
Member Luger will second.
Member Luger will second that around the room. Member Zeross.
Hi.
Member Luger.
Hi.
Member Schilling.
Hi.
Member Jaeger.
Hi.
And Mayor Iverson does say yes to that. So it has passed and thank you for that hard work and great presentation. We appreciate it.
All right, thank you so much. And before I go, I'd like to thank Rob and Hannah and the team for being very well prepared. The audit went well. So thank you and have a good evening, everyone.
Great, thank you. Take care. Number eighteen on our agenda, to consider resolution twenty dash oh six dash fifty six, a resolution expressing intent to create and administer a tax increment finance district for development of a seventy six unit affordable housing project. Mr. Linwood, you'll be taking this one?
Yes, Mayor members of the city council, I'll be starting this out and then Tom, Tom Denaway will be joining us to go through a brief presentation from Springstead. Tonight, the council is presented with a resolution expressing intent to create and administer a tax finance directed, excuse me, district for a development from Roar's companies. The council is most likely familiar with this and just for the public that's watching. Last year, Roar's approached the city council for an affordable housing plan that was a forty nine unit development and applied for an MHFA tax credit for that project along with the option agreement with the city and a resolution of support for it. The developer was not selected last year through that run. The developer is still interested in having it developed in Wyoming. They came back to the city and they have proposed a new project. This one being a larger project, this one being a seventy six unit affordable housing development on the city owned Bingham property. They believe that this larger development will help them score, score better in that MHFA application. That is their hope and their intent. And it's also for the city of Wyoming. It will offer a kind of a need in our, that affordable workhouse, workforce housing option if the project were to move, were to move forward. With that, I think I will turn it over to Mr. Denaway as he has gone through it through some of the financial projections and will break down through some of the cost of the land that we would be selling. This land is owned jointly with the Chicago County HRA EDA and some of the different implications for a potential sale along with the project.
All right.
I think you're.
Mr. Denaway, how are you tonight?
Good, how are you doing?
Good.
I'm gonna try to share my screen here. Hi, is everybody seeing PowerPoint presentation?
Yes.
All right, so this is going to be a bit of a repeat of the presentation from the other night, but I'll try to be quick and be brief. I just wanted to go over it again for people that may have not been able to attend that meeting and just to provide again a summary of the proposed project. So quickly, let's just talk about the tax credit process. What is the definition of affordable housing and how it relates to this case? We'll get into some of the details for the land purchase as well as the proposed TIF assistant assistance, how the city would benefit and then ultimately what the next steps would be if the city council was interested in moving forward with this. So the tax credit process, so the developers pursuing the nine percent affordable housing tax credits. This is a competitive process administered by MHFA or the Minnesota Housing Finance, Finance Agency. And the developers preparing their application for the June submitted to, to MHFA. Ultimately, the tax credits, if the developer would be successful, would be awarded in October. And following that, at the end of the year is when the project and the actual creation of the TIF district would start in earnest if they were successful at seeking or receiving the tax credits. So as it relates to the tax credit process, these is, this is a competitive process and then projects are awarded tax credits based on their competitiveness and they're pointing within the MHFA system. So one of the things that this developer is seeking is preliminary support from the city as part of that application process relating to what is referred to within the application as a local contribution. In most circumstances, the local contribution is provided in the form of the creation of a tax increment district. Doesn't have to be within that manner, but it is the most commonly used manner. And in order for the project to be competitive within that process and receive enough points to be awarded tax credits, they almost always have to have that local contribution as part of their application for pointing purposes. So the definition of affordable housing, you can see the full definition there. It's, the idea is that for affordability, it's for households to pay no more than three percent of their annual income on housing, including utilities. So you can see in the chart below what the developers proposed unit mix is and how many of the units would be set aside for income restricted units. So the project has approximately sixteen units that would be fully market rate. These would not be income restricted. They'd be available to anybody to be rented. The set aside units are, there's eight units being set aside at fifty percent of the area median income. And then the remaining fifty two units are set aside to meet the sixty percent area median income. So when we talk about affordable units and the way that tax, the way that these projects work is by setting aside an income units for income restricted families. So making sure that the units that are set aside that the occupants meet the income requirements and that they also have caps on the annual amount of rent that could be paid on those units that have an income verified. So you can see on the right what the gross rents would be based on the, on a unit size and how that corresponds with the units being set aside. So on the next page, we have the Maxfield Housing Study that was prepared by the, for the city and the county in two thousand and eighteen identified average rental rates within the city of Wyoming of eight hundred and thirty four dollars a month and within Chicago County of six hundred and seventy eight dollars a month. So even though the project has rental units being set aside for income restriction, restrictions, the majority of the units will still exceed these average rental rates as identified in the Maxfield study. So eight percent of the units or eleven percent will have income limitations that fifty percent of the area of eating income. And that income limitation varies depending on the family size. You can see, see down here what the income would be depending on family size at the fifty percent threshold. And then similarly, the number of units, sixty eight percent of the total units or fifty two units in total will be set aside for people, sixty percent of the area median income. And again, you can see what the income levels are again, depending on family size for that threshold. So while this is referred to as affordable housing, it really falls more within the lines of what is commonly known now as workforce housing. It's not what, what the traditional definition of affordable housing might be in some people's minds. It is income restricted, but the income is, is fairly significant from what somebody might consider affordable housing to actually be. With these income levels, it's more of a workforce type housing product. So getting onto the, the specific project itself and the, the acquisition of the land. So the developer is proposing to purchase the jointly owned property for four hundred and fifty thousand. So that price is less than the current asking price for the property and that's due to be, that's due to the need to be competitive within the tax credit process. That's one of the areas on which they would be judged is how much are they paying for the land and the like. Obviously, MHFA doesn't want to provide projects that, you know, provide tax credits for projects that are overpaying for land. So in this case, the, the property would be purchased for four hundred and fifty thousand. The city does, or the city and the county do currently have carrying costs on that property in two thousand and twenty and every year prior and would subsequently have these costs if they did not sell the property. And those costs in the city portion would be thirty one thousand four hundred and twenty nine dollars annually for the city's portion of the mortgage payment. And then the total property tax amount on the property is almost eighty seven hundred dollars and that gets split evenly between Chicago County and the city. So the proposed sale, sales price does result in a gap after payment of the commission on the sale and the sharing of the sale proceeds with the county that would leave the city with approximately twenty two thousand three hundred and thirty five dollars that would be unpaid on the existing mortgage on the property. And we'll get into how that would be repaid in a little bit. So the process is that developer needs to show that they have a property under contract as part of their application process. So right now, as most being proposed is entering into an option contract on, on the land. And then if they are successful at receiving the tax credit award at the end of October, they would then enter into the purchase of the property. So this would be an option contract, hopefully leading to a purchase if they're successful with a tax credit award. So now to talk about TIF a little bit. So what is tax increment financing? It's a method of capturing the tax base growth resulting from the new development. So the property that gets, that's constructed or the development that's constructed within a TIF district will continue to pay the full property tax amount that they would otherwise pay as if they were not within a TIF district. What happens within the TIF district is that full property tax amount that is paid by that development gets captured as the tax increment and it gets used to reimburse the, the developer for eligible improvements over time on a pay as you go basis. So that incremental growth in property taxes resulting from the development gets captured by the county, sent back to the city and that's used to reimburse, reimburse the developer on the basis of the pay as you go note. So the developer is only eligible to receive revenue that is generated by the project. If property taxes are less, if market values change, if property tax structure changes and there's a a lesser amount of tax increment revenue than what was originally projected, the city has no obligation to make up any shortfalls in that revenue from the original projections. The city's only obligation is to make available the percentage of tax increment revenue that's generated that's agreed upon within the contracts. The city has zero risk as it relates to any shortfalls in TIF revenue. There is a fixed term for the capture based on the type of TIF district that's created. And ultimately, that new development gets added to the tax base and everybody benefits from the new taxes generated by that project following the completion of the TIF district. So what is the proposed TIF assistance that's being provided, that is being proposed for this project? So again, the TIF is necessary and TIF can only be used in circumstances where we can meet what's referred to as the but for test. So statutorily, we have to identify that the proposed project would not occur but for the reuse of the requested assistance. That's kind of the philosophy behind why TIF is eligible to be used in Minnesota and every other state that utilizes. TIF is this idea that the taxes that are being generated by the project and captured to fund the project would not have otherwise been generated because the project wouldn't have been feasible but for that use of the tax increment assistance. So we know from the but for standpoint that this project would not occur but for the use of TIF for two reasons. One is we know it's necessary for the project to be viable and not competitive tax credit process, as I mentioned before. Without that local contribution, the project would not be competitive from a pointing system. Additionally, it's also necessary specifically for this project from a financial feasibility perspective. So we analyzed the preliminary budget and operating revenues provided by the developers, developer for this project and found that the project would not have adequate cash flow to meet anticipated borrowing requirements and lending requirements on the private debt service that would be part of this deal absent the requested TIF assistance. So we know, we know on the basis of two different reasons that the project would meet that but for test, one for the tax credit process and two, simply because it wouldn't be financially feasible absent the request of assistance. So the preliminary assistance amount that's estimated for the project is, and this is all based off of preliminary tax increment revenue projections. The only thing we really know is that these numbers are going to be slightly changed due to future tax rates being different. But for preliminary purposes based on the tax rates that are in place today, we've estimated that preliminary assistance to be in a value of eight hundred and seventy thousand dollars as a principal amount. So the developer is going to be reimbursed over time as a pay as you go basis for eight hundred and seventy thousand dollars in costs that they would incur today. So they're going to have to fund those costs upfront either out of pocket or by borrowing. So as a result of that, when we fund developers, and this is very common with most or the majority of tax increment notes pay as you go notes, that we reimburse the developer a principal amount, in this case, eight hundred and seventy thousand dollars. And we also reimburse them an interest carrying cost as well. So for preliminary purposes of estimating that upfront amount, we assume an interest rate of four and a half percent. So the percentage that would be available to the developer out of the total tax increment revenue that's would be generated, that would be eligible to be used to repay that pay as you go note is preliminarily estimated to be eighty seven percent of the annually generated increment. We'll get into what the other thirteen percent will be used for in a little bit. So the preliminary estimate of the annual amount of TIF that would be paid to the developers approximately sixty eight thousand seventy five dollars prior to any inflation. So that would be the annual amount of property taxes generated by the, by the TIF district, captured by the TIF district that would go back to the developer. Of that, the portion that is applicable to the city's portion of the total tax rate is twenty two thousand one hundred and ninety two. And the amount of that that would be applicable to the county's tax rate is approximately thirty two, thirty two thousand six hundred and seventy six. The remaining difference between those two amounts and then sixty eight thousand are the taxes that would be applicable to the school district and then the other smaller taxing jurisdictions. The proposed repayment term for this note is only a twenty year term. Affordable housing tax increment districts have the ability to be in place for a maximum term of up to twenty six years. So the proposed repayment term for this pay as you go note, this preliminary estimate of the TIF assistance is a twenty year term for the repayment. So it's shorter than the overall maximum term that the district could be in place. So the idea behind this is to shrink the potential amount of assistance, shrink the duration of the TIF district and hopefully get this pay as you go note paid off on an earlier basis and get the property back on the general tax base so everybody can benefit from the market value that was created by the project. So the city would capture a portion of the annual TIF revenue. So the city has that initial land acquisition gap of twenty two, twenty two thousand three hundred and thirty five dollars. So when I talked about the amount that would be going to the developer, it was eighty seven percent of the annual TIF revenue. The other thirteen percent would be captured by the city and would be used for two purposes. We anticipate that eight percent of that amount would be set aside initially to repay that, that financing gap from the sale of the property of twenty two thousand three hundred and thirty five. The city would be able to repay itself that amount over the initial years of the TIF district from that eight percent. Plus, they'd be also be able to reimburse themselves approximately four percent of interest incurred on that. And then additionally, the city would also retain five percent of the annual increment to fund administrative expenses related to the TIF district. The idea is, is that hopefully and potentially as the city sees fit, if that twenty two thousand three hundred and thirty five has been repaid and the city has recouped that amount that the city could then decide if they wanted to use that eight percent that was going towards that and they could use that to prepay or repay the, the tax increment note at a faster rate than originally projected and potentially shrink that overall duration from the twenty years by a couple of years. So once that amount is repaid, the city would have that flexibility to determine how they want to be used that eight percent as well as the five percent that's set aside for administrative expenses. So again, all the TIF amounts are preliminary and subject, subject to slight changes resulting from whatever the final twenty twenty one tax rates would be when the district would actually be created. So how would the city benefit from this project? The city would benefit in a number of ways. First, they would benefit from the annual mortgage payment of thirty one thousand four hundred and twenty nine dollars not being paid anymore. So if the property was, or the developer was successful at the tax credits and purchased the property at the end of two thousand and twenty, in two thousand and twenty one, the city would realize thirty one thousand four hundred and twenty nine dollars in savings because they would no longer have that mortgage payment. Initially, that also receives. Our savings from no longer having to pay the property tax expense on the property of which they're paying fifty percent of almost eighty seven hundred dollars now. And then the other way that the city would benefit is that the post-construction permit and zoning fees for the project are approximately eight hundred and ninety thousand dollars. So. That would be provide additional revenue to the city via the building permit fees, utility access charges, park dedication, et cetera. And finally, the city would also benefit by providing additional housing opportunities within the community at current market rates as indicated in the need. As indicated as a need in the twenty eighteen Chicago County Housing Study. And would create a more, uh, more or additional workforce housing opportunities within the city. So the final next step that, uh, would be taken if, if the city council was so interested would be. At this meeting would be the adoption of the resolution of support for the project and the utilization of TIF. That would enable the developer to submit their application to MHFA. And then if they are successful with the, the awarding of the tax credits, they can come back to the city and request. Creation at the end of twenty twenty or the start of twenty twenty one, the creation of the TIF district. So that is, uh, the total of my presentation. So I guess I will set it aside for any questions.
Right, Mr. Dunaway, um, could you go back to how it benefits the city, please, just a slide before that? And then I'm going to ask Mr. Linwood, um, again, for people that may be watching and listening to this, um. Council meeting tonight, just a little bit of history on the, the, um. Land that we, um, are looking at for that development, how long we've had it, the amount of money that we've paid. Um, and I would just also like to state that, um, this has been a project, um. Uh, goal for the EDA, um, over the course of the last four years. So. But Mr. Linwood, could you talk a little bit more about that property and how long we've had it?
Certainly, um, the property was originally purchased back in two thousand and two jointly by. The Wyoming EDA and the Chicago County HRA EDA. Um, since then, uh, we have owned it approximately eighteen years, um, jointly with the county. The county has. Uh, paid off their component of the mortgage on that. Uh, the city, as you'd see in the slides, didn't still, I'm sorry.
You were, um, frozen there for a second.
Oh, okay. Um, the city, uh, I apologize, I'm not, not quite sure, but. The, the county has paid off their portion of the mortgage. The city still has an outstanding balance. Um, on that mortgage of about twen- two hundred and twenty seven thousand, um, at the end of two thousand and twenty, uh, once we make our second half payment on that mortgage. Um, we will continue to make payment on that mortgage of that thirty one thousand four hundred and twenty nine dollars until two thousand and thirty two. Um, we also would be having to pay that eighty six, or excuse me, eighty six hundred and ninety, half of that. Um, or whatever that may variable from year to year. Um, it went up, uh, fairly significant in two thousand and twenty, the taxes on that, I think, uh, from about. Sixty five hundred to that eighty six ninety just due to evaluation of the land. So it would also be continuing. Uh, to factor in that property tax payment for the next ten, eleven years. So. Overall, you'd be factoring in approximately a payment for the next eleven years of that mortgage. So. Well over three hundred thousand dollars and approximately probably fifty thousand and, uh, in payments for the taxes on the property.
Okay, thank you. I will open it for questions from council. Um, we will start with, uh, member Zirwas.
No questions.
Um, member Luger.
No questions.
All right, um. Member Schilling, um, you're a part of the EDA. Do you have any, um, you probably, I don't know, you might have some questions, but, um, is there anything you'd like to say on behalf of this project?
Uh, no, Mayor, thank you for the, uh. Opportunity to speak on this. I, I think this is a wonderful project. This was something that, uh, I would. Have liked to seen when I started, so I hope we can get it through this time. I think with the added changes that we have made. I'm, you know, keeping my fingers crossed on this one as well. And I'd like to thank Tom for all of his, uh, time and effort on this. He's put a lot of, a lot of hours in this and presentation time, so. I'm, uh, hoping we can move forward with this. I'd like to see that property occupied and. Uh, in the right direction for the city.
Right, thank you. Member Jaeger.
Okay, the eight hundred and seventy in preliminary as, uh, assistance. Is that all the city or is that split?
That would be the total amount of tax increment revenue that would be going towards the developer, uh. The tax increment revenue would be collected in the name of the city would be generated as TIF revenue. So it's. But it is future tax dollars that would be, have otherwise been applicable to the city, the county and the school district. So. Tax increment takes those revenues that would be generated based on the incremental growth of market value. It captures those taxes applicable to each of those local tax rates. And sets them aside as tax increment revenue, then it gets used to repay the developer. So. The money would be getting paid by the city from the generated tax increment revenue. But the tax increment revenue that's generated would be applicable to each of the taxing jurisdictions' local tax rates.
So the city would then pay a percentage. The city's share of that eight hundred and seventy would be a, a percentage and then the county another percentage?
Well, the, it would all be paid, the total revenue would be, the, the total revenue would be collected as tax increment revenue. So it, it's, it would all get paid by the city, but the, the amount that is captured is. Proportionate to each taxing jurisdiction's tax rate and their percentage of the total tax rate. So. The revenue was generated, captured as TIF, and it's applicable to each of the taxing jurisdiction's tax rates, but it gets paid by the city. But ultimately, it's revenue that would not have gone to the county or the school district because it was captured as tax increment revenue.
Okay, so I think it was more if somebody had asked. If somebody said, well, is the city giving up eight hundred and seventy thousand dollars? I could say, no, there's, uh, the town, the county and the. School district also give up proportions of that too.
Yes, correct.
That's what I was getting at.
Yeah.
Okay, and. After the, the shortfall is paid off. Will the city at that time decide if they want to use that extra eight percent to pay down the note? Or does the city have to, um, decide before that?
Uh, it would be the city's option at the time that that, uh, interfund loan was repaid. That would be their option to determine how they wanted to use those dollars if they had other affordable housing. Uh, et cetera, that they could make potentially use it for. There are pooling. Allowances allowed by TIF statute that potentially could. Create other uses for those dollars, but it would ultimately be the city council's discretion at the time. That that interfund loan is repaid, how they wanted to use that. So if you see on this slide. Uh. Getting back to the total amount of TIF that's projected to be generated on an annual basis of sixty eight thousand, then you can see the amount that, of that, that would be applicable to the city's tax rate and the county's tax rate.
Okay, and then it's. Just trying to copy. Okay, um. And then the last question, last year we were told that Roars had a twenty percent chance of success. At, uh, getting the housing tax credits. Has that number changed any?
You know, I don't, I don't get involved in that side of the transaction, uh. As to how competitive their application would be. So I would, I would be hesitant to be able to speak on that. I just, I would have to defer that to Roars to see how. Optimistic they may or may not be with the competitiveness of this application.
Right, I, I, I think Mr. Mr. Dunaway, I would, I would agree. I think that's Roars, but in, in regards to the conversations that I have had with them that. Uh, the feedback that they received last year from MHFA in regards to their application. They feel that the application this year with, along with increasing the size of the project. And some other prompt parameters that they did not share, that they felt that they would have a stronger application this year than the, the previous. So. Hence why they, they felt they were close last year and that with some, with some changes, they feel that they'll be a viable candidate this time around.
Okay, thank you.
All right, um, I would just like to add that having that property without having that payment, um, will be a good thing. Um, for us, uh, knowing that, um, the, there's some fees that are involved that we're going to be able to collect as well. In addition to park fees, um, will be great. Um, and then just knowing, talking with a lot of our local businesses and our manufacturers and. We're in dire need of having workforce housing. Um, so this is just a huge benefit. Um, for our city, I believe, and for our businesses that are here and our residents. So, um, I'm in full support of it. Again, we don't know if it'll happen or not, but, um, we hope that it does. And Mr. Dunaway, you do a great job with presenting, so we appreciate that. Um, I believe I gave everybody a chance to ask questions. Thinking, shake your head, when, I think so. Okay, good. All right, so with that, um. Uh, we are on number eighteen. We need a, a motion, um, to approve resolution. Twenty dash oh six dash fifty six, a resolution expressing intent to create and administer a tax increment finance district. For development of a seventy six unit affordable housing project. I need a motion to approve.
So moved.
Okay, we have members there with the first and member Schilling for the second.
Correct.
Perfect. Around the room, please. Um, member Jaeger.
Aye.
Member Schilling.
Aye.
Member Luger.
Aye.
Member Zirwas.
Aye.
And Mayor Iverson is a yes, so we will, um, happy to, to have that resolution. Uh, number nineteen, to consider a letter of support for the Roar's affordable housing project from the city of Wyoming. To the Minnesota Housing Agency MHFA. Mr. Linwood.
Mayor, this is, uh, an item. This is the, the letter of support. Uh, this is a necessary component of the application. Uh, the Roars needs to complete for, to MHFA. So, uh, essentially it's pretty straightforward this, that the, the city council is affirming that. Um, they are in favor of the project as it has been presented to you. So that would be just a, a motion if, uh, if the city council is so inclined to, to approve the letter.
All right, um, so, uh, we will go around the room and ask for questions. Members there was.
None.
Member Luger.
No question.
Members Schilling. He's shaking his head. No, so.
No questions, sorry. There's a sneezing thing going on right now.
Member Jaeger.
No questions.
All right, so we need, uh, um. Let's see, we need a letter, we need to, a, a motion to approve the letter of support for the Roar's affordable housing project. Do you have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Member Luger does the first. Do we have a second? I will second that. We'll go around the room. Uh, Mayor Zirwas. I'm sorry, member Zirwas.
Aye.
Member Luger.
Aye.
Member Schilling.
Aye.
Member Jaeger.
Aye.
And Mayor Iverson, was that a slip of the tongue, member Schilling or, or member Zirwas? I'm just having one of those nights, right?
Okay.
Working towards that perfection and I'm still not there. All right, um, we are going to go to number twenty. Um, to consider resolution twenty dash oh six dash five seven to authorize the city of Wyoming. Into MINDAT agreement number one zero three eight two six with the state of Minnesota Department of Transportation. Providing payment for the traffic control signal at, um, highway sixty one and Fallbrook Avenue. Uh, I'm, is that Ms. Dumas or, oh, great, all right.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, members of council. Uh, this is, uh, an update on the US sixty one, but East Viking Avenue and Fallbrook Avenue. Um, the intersection there has been identified as, um. A candidate for a new traffic signal. The city had reached out to MINDAT. Um, as, uh, to inquire if we could do a traffic study at this intersection, um, as there was a lot of traffic buildup. Um, and MINDAT did, uh, confirm that, yeah, it was a appropriate intersection to have a traffic signal at. They did look at some other, uh, traffic safety devices and a signal was, um. Selected as the best candidate for this specific intersection. Um, one thing that's really exciting about this project is that, uh, the city had originally budgeted a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the city's share of this project. Um, and when the bid came back, we were under that, um, only having to do a hundred and twenty two thousand. Uh, so that is a good, good thing for the city to be able to, uh, participate in this project for less than was originally budgeted for.
That's great, thank you. Um, I know many people who, um, are very excited to know when they come out of the, um, industrial park. Nearly impossible to get across there, um, with your life. So I know many people that'll be very excited to, to have that and. Um, Mr. Linwood, I don't know if you can answer this question. Uh, there is some pretty big potholes over there. Um, will that take, will we be doing some recon, not reconstruction, but somehow fixing that pavement? The pavement that is right there on Fallbrook and sixty one?
I think it's part of that, uh, Mr. Erickson, and please jump in if I'm wrong, but I believe that there will be. Um, a component where it does come into some of those large potholes right at the beginning between Viking Boulevard and Fallbrook. So. Um, how far back it will go? I don't know if it'll quite go, um, back to the, the gas station area or with the old gas station, but it will come through a component of that. Initial portion of Fallbrook. Uh, Mr. Erickson, I don't know if you have any more thoughts on just how far that, those twenty twenty one plans will go.
Yeah, I, I didn't get, I'm not, I'm not sure exactly which, uh, potholes, uh, and how far back they are, but I know that they will wrap around those radiuses some and. Pick up, uh, a number of those potholes that exist there today. I thought I would add just a little bit as well regarding financing. I know this is not. A state aid roadway, but it is, uh, eligible for an off-system state aid, uh, expense. So we can use. Some of our estate aid accrual for this hundred and twenty two thousand dollars. And so we'd be looking, uh, likely to do that as well.
Um, I would like to ask one question, kind of, um. To that point, Mr. Erickson, um, that road has been identified as, um. Maybe a, not a redo, maybe just some paving and that kind of thing. Um, if we already have, um, construction going on there, is that a way that we can also, um, redo that road at the same time in some cost savings?
Uh, with the MINDAT project, they would not be taking on any additional, um, we, we certainly could maybe talk to the contractor about. Um, some minor patching or things like that and, and have a separate contract with them. But I know that MINDAT, um, MINDAT's project and their, their construction limits are set. And, uh, typically don't expand into local roadways.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Um, I will go around the room for questions. Uh, members there was.
No questions.
Member Luger.
Um, just one, uh. Assuming this passes tonight, what is kind of timeline of, of when this will go in?
Their construction, uh, will be starting, I believe, we haven't gotten a detailed schedule, but it'll be twenty twenty one. Likely around that June timeline. Um, our project needs to be constructed first, and so the sanitary sewer will extend from this intersection. At Fallbrook and go east. All the way to Fenwick. And so that's, uh, that's that deep sanitary sewer. So our project needs to be completed first. And so we'll likely be starting the end of April with construction for our project. And wrapping up, uh, likely by the end of May.
Thank you.
And so they'll be shortly thereafter.
All right, member Schilling.
Sorry, I was writing some notes. Uh, Claire, thank you for the question. That was one of mine. Um, I just wanted to add at this point now, I, I actually think this is a great idea. I've actually been stuck here a few times and I know that employees leaving this area have. Had a massive line to leave and especially when you got everybody coming off the freeway, so.
All right, and member Jaeger.
We talked, you talked about, uh. Uh, we could take some of this out of state funds. Uh, can we take some of it or all of it? And will we have enough state aid funds built up again for it?
So our state aid account currently, um, if you recall, uh, with the Goodview Avenue project and the Fairview Avenue project, we advanced and covered our construction allotment. And so currently we're actually, um, at a negative balance of about negative one hundred and forty nine thousand dollars in that account. Uh, but that's not to say that we can't still utilize state aid funds. We may not be able to collect them. Um, immediately. Right now, the state aid is not allowing any further advances based on. The depletion of their funds or their accounts, um, due to the gas tax revenue shortages. And so. We're not able to advance any, any funds, but we will be able to utilize those funds and once, uh, we may have to upfront the cost. But we will, uh, have those returned to the city once our account, um, gets, uh, back up into good standing. I shouldn't say good standing. We're in good standing. We just, um, advanced and expedited the improvement projects within our community that needed so, so badly. And MINDAT actually encourages that. And so. Uh, we've done that, but we would be reimbursed, uh, when our, when our balance does get back in the positive.
Okay, and the upfront costs would come out of the street improvement funds?
That would be correct.
And it, and how much, about how much is in that fund at the moment?
Um, I would have to look at the financials, but I. I would have to look at the financials, but I believe approximately one point three to one point five million. But I want to double check the financials, but we, we have plenty to cover the cost of that, that light. And then, as Mr. Erickson stated, be refunded by those MSA proceeds once they build back up.
Okay, thank you.
And and I should state that 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 balances as of this year. And we know that our accrual next year will be somewhat less due to the shortfall in the, in the gas tax revenues. But our, our typical annual accrual is four hundred and twenty thousand dollars. And so we will be in the positive next year when these expenses are due. And we will have, I guess we wouldn't need to upfront the cost now that I think of that, because our, our, our accrual next year will, will replenish, get us in the positive enough to cover those expenses.
Okay.
All right. And Mr. Linwood, you're sharing your screen.
Yeah.
Sorry about that.
That's all right. Um, all right. So with that, if there are no other questions, we are gonna need a motion to approve Resolution twenty dash oh six dash fifty-seven to authorize the city of Wyoming into MINTAD's agreement number one zero three six eight two three. Do we have a motion to approve?
Member Schilling make that motion.
Member Schilling makes the first. Do we have a second?
Member Luger will second.
Member Luger makes the second and we'll go around the room. Member Jaeger?
Aye.
Member Schilling?
Aye.
Member Luger?
Aye.
Member Zirwas?
Aye.
And Mayor Iverson is an eye on that. So it does approve. I think many people are gonna be very happy to have a stoplight there next year. So number twenty-one, to consider a joint meeting with the Comfort Lake Forest Lake Watershed Board on July thirtieth, twenty twenty at six thirty PM, Ms. Dumas?
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. Comfort Lake Forest Lake Watershed District has reached out to request a joint board meeting with city council to talk about a couple topics, including lakes, aquatic invasive species, stormwater management, floodplain, building, deplanning and groundwater to get a, engage in that conversation, kind of update everyone on what is going on and some goals for the future so that both organizations can really optimize planning. They have proposed July thirtieth at six thirty for this proposed date. So we bring that to you. If the council has a different date that they would be interested in proposing, that's also something we could bring back to the watershed.
Okay, I guess I would like to propose a different date. So, um, we've been doing a really great job, especially in the summertime, to kind of put a couple meetings together to to enjoy the summer. So I'm wondering if the council would consider before a council meeting at five thirty PM for either the fourth or the eighteenth of August? So it'd be five thirty. So if that would work for everybody, and then we do our council meeting.
Mayor, I'm actually taking the last month or the last week of July off, first week of August. So the eighteenth works for me.
Okay.
And, and didn't we change the council meeting to the fifth of August?
That, that, that would be in regards to National Night Out, council member Jaeger?
Right. And we, we changed that meeting the beginning back in January.
You, you would be, that would be correct. That mean, that we did move that meeting to Wednesday, and so it did not have a a conflict with National Night Out. So that would be, that would be correct.
All right, Dennis. So my question is, you said you would be gone that first week. Does the fifth make a difference? So we're still on the eighteenth?
I'm still on the eighteenth, Mayor. I apologize.
All right, member Jaeger?
Oh, I'm fine with the eighteenth.
All right, to member Luger?
Eighteenth works for me.
All right, and members there was?
Eighteenth works for me.
Awesome. So can, Ms. Dumas, can you go back to them and and let them know that five thirty on the eighteenth of August would be great?
Absolutely.
Awesome. Thank you. Um, all right, twenty-two. It is the last agenda item we have tonight. It is to discuss a short-term rental housing ordinance proposed by Shisago County that would apply to the city of Wyoming. Mr. Linwood?
Yes, Mayor, members of the council. At the June third, twenty twenty Shisago County Board Meeting, they reviewed a short-term rental housing ordinance drafted in response with county board concern that there were growing prominence in the, in the county and certain cities and townships of Airbnb, TripAdvisor, and other residential rental services. The board has not taken action on the ordinance yet. It sounds as if they will be moving forward with a review of this ordinance at their meeting tomorrow night. Staff did a preliminary review, Ms. Dumas did, to kind of look at in Wyoming, the use of Airbnb, short-term rental housing. We were able to find two, looking at all those different services, services that are offered. I think as the staff reviewed this, I don't think we have any real issue with what the ordinance states or the enforcement or licensing, or how that, how that will work. I think some of the concerns that our staff brought up with was in regards to that, I guess, the the city didn't really have any opportunity to really comment on this, other than at the, the last minute, the first time around in regards to this ordinance, if the city council feels it's something that we would be interested in, if it was going to be applying to our municipality. The other concern we had is we have seen previously from the county, sometimes when they institute certain ordinances or certain programs that they may be willing to take on those costs and those services in the beginning, but staff also brought up the potential if it became an unfunded mandate, the city would have to provide this for. And I think that was another item. And then in regards that we don't have a rental ordinance and why the county just wouldn't do a full-out rental ordinance, I guess, if they were gonna move forward with this. I know that one other city right now within the county has sent a letter to the county board objecting to this, saying that they didn't have proper notice and proper input. And essentially asking why they are putting in place an ordinance that is affecting how they may do business in their city. And they would like to essentially have an opportunity to to review that and to decide what kind of ordinance would fit well within their city. So I, tonight is, it's an opportunity for the city council. I wanted some weigh-in on this, and if we felt that we wanted to have a, a comment or a potential statement or letter even to the county in regards to this ordinance, I thought it was important just to have some feedback from the city council tonight.
So I'm gonna start with this. I will be attending the special meeting, it's not a special meeting, a hearing for this in July. I did receive a call from Chair Monska a couple days before, it might even been the day of, that they were taking the vote on this. And I am concerned. I would like to be, I would like to think, given past practices and that we've kind of mended some, some issues that we had, that they would not do an unfunded mandate. My concern is this. They do say that this super exceeds anything that the cities, the local cities will be able to put in place, and that does concern me. I would be in favor of a letter sent to them, but I also will be attending that special hearing in July. So that's my two cents into that. And we will ask, member Luger, should she have any questions?
Can you give me an example of how this might translate into an unfunded mandate? Like, what, what is an example that of something that might happen where the city gets stuck with a bill or where this works against us?
Certainly. I think in regards to a program like this, there's gonna be an administrative component to it. So someone's gonna have to be actively administrating the program and then reviewing and answering potential complaints or licensing for the program. And then also essentially a rental inspector that is gonna be actively going out and potentially to those properties. So there would be, you know, a component of staff time if it were at some point that the county said, we prefer that the the cities take on this, this ordinance, and they're the ones that have to administer it and actually have to fund it and have personnel for it.
Okay. My second question then is, what, looking across the state, how common is it for counties to kind of develop this ordinance and then cities within those counties to adopt it versus for cities to come up with their own short-term ordinance or just flat-out rental ordinance?
So that's a good question. I, I, we haven't completely researched that, but I would say that you could see a larger majority of the time that you'll have a city that will have a complete rental ordinance, and that's, you know, completed by the city and controlled by the city. And that would be for all kind of rentals, including those short-term. So I think that would be the majority of you seeing, not to say that they're not potentially counties or that have, you know, rental ordinances or short-term ordinances, but in the, in the brief research that I've done, I think it's more of a city item in regards to those.
Okay. That's all I have. Thank you.
Welcome.
All right. And we will go with members there was?
No, I'm not in favor of myself. I'm not in favor of passing an ordinance like that. The county, they haven't even passed that ordinance yet, and then they expect the city to the cities within the county to pass ordinance. And I don't really know enough about it that I'd want to vote to pass it. So I'm not in favor.
All right. Member Jaeger?
Okay. So I open up my Shisago County press, and the first, the sentence is, the first ever ordinance regulating short-term rentals was approved by the county board, four to one. When I subsequently talked to Commissioner Monska, he says, yes, the ordinance was approved. What they'll be discussing is a contract with a company called Host Compliance, who will be doing the administration of this ordinance. Host, so Friday, Chip looked up Host Compliance and found that they were a subsidiary of Granicus, who I remember getting several emails from with various products. And these guys, while they may have a local Minnesota, St. Paul address, they're out, out of Silicon Valley. So it was my understanding that this Host Compliance company, who also apparently may do, you know, help you write your ordinance and, and help you on your enforcement, will be the ones who actually do this. As for the ordinance, again, I'm not, I'm not thrilled with the county, oh, I should say, based on the merits of the ordinance. I mean, some of it I found very nanny-ish. Some of it I found, well, we only have two Airbnb properties. Some of it, if you're going to regulate a short-term rental, why not regulate all rentals? What's the difference between renting out my house as an Airbnb and renting out my house because I, you know, happened to move someplace else? And when I moved here, I did rent out this house for a brief period of time. Um, so I mean, I'm like either, you know, or, you know, regulate everything or, you know, have to rethink about this. Uh, but as for the county superseding it, I mean, we took back the radios, we took back the, you know, the RMS. I don't know if we want to give up control. But if, as a city, we decided later on, we wanted to do, we wanted to regulate this, may not be so bad to have the county do the work for us. Which I know sound, this is all over the place, but it was a lot of discussion over the weekend.
So I do know from a conversation with a county commissioner that this ordinance came about because of one or two cabins on the lake that had been rented out. And there was a lot of partying going on. And so the county felt that this needed to be looked into, and we needed to have some enforcement on it. One of the things I do fear is the county coming to us and saying this is X amount of dollars, and now all the cities, the ten cities, and the townships too. My understanding is the townships are involved as well, that they're gonna split X amount of dollars among all of us, and, and we're gonna have to, to pay for it. And you know, what about the townships that don't have any rental properties? So it's, it's one of those things that unfortunately, I believe, was not thought out. And to send a letter to the cities and to the townships just a day or two before they talk about this and pass this, again, shows a lack of respect for the local cities and their elected officials to be able to discuss it, talk about it, and make some decisions from there. Member Jaeger, did you have any other questions?
Um, I mean, some of the other questions I had, Rob already talked about, you know, will Wyoming staff be expected to perform the duties, even if we are reimbursed? Do we have the manpower? Who's going to handle the inspections? And, and, you know, I was also told there were complaints up in Fish Lake. Well, wouldn't that be handled by our nuisance ordinances? If, if I have a wild party, I'm sure the police will be over here. But if the, the Airbnb next door has a wild party, do you have to wait for the county? And to your point, Madam Mayor, that, no, this was not thought out enough. These questions were not answered. So I would be in favor of, if we want to do this, you know, maybe not have the county supersede us?
All right. Who did I miss? Member Schilling, did I? Okay, sorry.
Okay, I'm gonna start with, I'll just start with this general statement. I'm not in favor of this at all. I think this whole thing is ridiculous in my mind, and I think the county commission completely overstepped when they tried to force this on a municipal city. Because if complaints came in in a city that was renting out a home, that issue should have been brought up with the city. And that particular city should have came up with some type of solution. Because a lot of the cities up here don't have rental ordinances. Second, I think that if you want a county to oversee some type of short-term rental, then you might as well implement an entire rental program. Because a short-term rental is nothing more than a money grab. It has nothing to do with anything unless they're gonna have an on-call inspector go in and inspect all these properties. There's no point in it at all. You're just trying to generate revenue, in my opinion. And if it is, again, complaint-based, then you go to that place that that complaint occurred, and you address it with that city council, trying to push this on all of us. And again, as our city administrator, Rob, had said, I mean, we have two of them here. We're gonna put an ordinance in place for two Airbnbs that we've had no complaints on that the county's gonna oversee. Yeah, I, I, I'm not for any of this, and I think the whole thing was completely, the cart was way in front of the horse on this. And I'll have to step up and attend this July hearing, because I don't like any of it. You either do a full-blown rental, otherwise it's, you're, all you're doing is money grabbing. These are Airbnbs. If they decide to rent their home for the, they go to Jamaica, rent their home for two weeks, I gotta sign up for a license. For what? I mean, are they gonna come in and do a building inspection of that? Are they gonna do a compliance inspection if it's not required in the ordinance to be licensed through the Department of Health? What are you doing? So I, I'm just gonna leave it at that. I don't like any of it. So, I mean, I'm in favor of rental programs. I'm just not in favor of this. These are silly to me.
Okay, so what I'm gonna ask then is the council in favor and is the council in favor of a letter drafted by Mr. Linwood and maybe ran through Attorney Lunin regarding this? Is that probably our next route to go? And then obviously attending that public hearing?
I'm in favor of that.
Okay, Claire?
I am as well.
All right. Joe, I heard you were a yes. Linda?
Yes.
Yes, works for me.
Okay. So, Mr. Linwood, would you be able to, to write something up and?
We, we can certainly provide the county with a letter objection on the, on the ordinance. And we will, we will certainly do that. And we'll get that off to them tomorrow. We'll get that off to the county administrator and the board of commissioners.
All right. Perfect. That looks like that was the last thing on our agenda. So before we do council reports, I would like to ask Mr. Erickson how Kettle River is going. It, just a brief update on that for us?
Can you say Kettle River? Can you, is that the, the project west of? You say Kettle River, can you, is that the, the project west of Kettle River, the neighborhood there?
Correct.
So yes, we have a pre-construction meeting this Friday with Dressel Contracting, the project contractor that we awarded a contract with. We have not gotten a detailed schedule yet, but they do indicate that they're planning to start the first week of July. We have sent out a, a letter to the residents, just informing them of that. Because I'm sure they're wondering, well, you know, when is this going to start, right? And so we did send a letter out here to residents, and we did on Friday post that to the city's website, just with an update as to when the project is anticipated to start.
All right, perfect, thank you. Mr. Lunin, we haven't heard from you at all. So do you have anything you want to say briefly before we do our council reports?
I do not think I have anything to add. I'm, I'm happy, I think a meeting where the attorney does not have to talk is a good a meeting.
That's a good meeting, you are correct. All right, so we are going to go around the room. Before I do that, let me just say to Mr. Wack and Mr. Eljub, thanks for, for being on the call with us too. We didn't hear from you at all today. All right, so let's start, let's start with member Jaeger.
I attended Monday's EDA meeting, and I attended the budget workshop. And I'd like to thank everybody who's watching for watching.
All right, and member Schilling.
Um, I attended, actually, two things. I missed the Monday EDA meeting because we had a special personnel committee meeting for the sewer commission to address the filling of our three positions that are currently open. And I may have mentioned at previous meeting that we're exploring three different avenues for that. So I will have a, a new update for that at the next council meeting because we do have another special sewer commission personnel committee meeting on Tuesday, or Monday at 2:30. I did attend the work session, and thank everybody for watching tonight, I appreciate it. I know it's a little bit of a long one, but we got through.
All right, member Luger.
I also attended the council budget meeting, and that's all I have. Thanks, everyone, for watching.
All right, and member Zirwas?
Yeah, I attended the sewer commission meeting yesterday at Nissam Signal as well. Mark Nelson said that the treatment performance has really turned around over the past month due to the increase in the temperatures in the SBRs, has jump-started the ammonia removal process again. He also stated, the effluent has dropped in low single digits, but will allow them to meet the permit limits in June, which drops down to 2.7 MGs. Actually, they're pretty close to zero at the ammonia level right now. And then David Irvine, and he's a consultant from Houston, Texas, along with Ron LaFon, the engineer, we were at the plant two days last week. They're investigating the plant's performance. The data that they generate will be used to develop operation plans for summer into winter months to develop better settlements and biomass that will keep the ammonia working while not having solid increases in issues that has happened over the last several years. Mark Nelson also presented a quote from In Control for updates to the SCADA system, the quotas to provide and install fiber optic lines between all the buildings at a cost of $32,600. And also, Mark Nelson gave us an update on advertising for the superintendent and wastewater operator positions. There were seven Class A license holders who applied for the superintendent's position, 13 applicants for the wastewater operator's position, and there were three different private company applicants. Use my phone, I'm going to my, my, uh, block up out here. The Pember Company submitted a bill in the amount of $123,870.50 for corridor lift station improvements for work completed through May 27th of 2020. We also earned a PFA loan for the capital improvements, was locked in today at an interest rate of 1%. And lastly, Union Negotiating Committee will meet on June 29th to start negotiations on a new two-year contract, and that's my report.
Thank you. Member Zirwas and member Schilling, I am always very grateful that you are the ones that are attending the sewer commission meetings. I'm just, I'm just putting that out there, you do a great job, and I just hope you love being on that committee. So, all right. All right, um, and then my report, it's pretty small. I attended, obviously, the EDA meeting, excited where the project hopefully will go with roars and having a great workforce housing property for our residents. Attended the budget or the work session, and then also attended the planning commission meeting. We are working on the comp plan. And that has, it does take a while to do that, and I appreciate Mr. Wack help, helping the planning commission through that as well. Mr. Linwood, just a quick question, please. We had the two videos that recently went out, it looks like many were shared and many views. Can you just round, a roundabout number on, on what it was?
Oh, boy. I would have to look at them, but I think on the graduation one, it was thousands of views, and the same with the reopening video, thousands as well. I, I can, I can give the council exact numbers if you'd like, but very, very many. So they've been shared and viewed quite often. So I think, I think they've been very positive for the community. Staff did a nice job working to pull those together. Ms. Dumas and Paul did a nice job working on those.
Yeah, they did, and I'd like to thank the Halberg Foundation for also helping with that video as well. It, it just really showcases our city. So very happy to have that, have that video to show people, to have it on our website, maybe even to show some businesses what we're all about. So good job, Ms. Dumas, very good.
I think it's like analytics on it. The graduation video had two, or 7.2,000 views, and the Wyoming reopening video had 3.7,000 views.
Nice, that's awesome, that's great. All right, with that, we need a motion to, oh, member Schilling.
I just have one statement at the end of this meeting. Mr. Lunin, next time I see you, I expect you to have a nice, clean haircut. We're getting a lot of views on the YouTube, talking about your hair. Completely false news there, sorry. Had to throw that in there, Mayor, I've never seen his hair so long, so.
No, it's all good, it's very good. I like the fact that our council can have some fun together as well, and, and with our staff too. So that's great. All right, um, so I do need a motion to adjourn, and I'm wondering if member Zirwas would be the first one?
I sure would. Move to adjourn.
Awesome, I need a second, and who do I want to pick on for that? Let's do, uh, member Jaeger.
Oh, I think I'll second that.
Awesome, and you know what, all at one time, I don't think I'm going to go around the room. All in favor?
All right.
All right, hopefully, uh, Mr. Lunin, that will survive, so.
We'll get it, we'll get it nice and cut for the next meeting. Just for, just for council member Schilling.
Thank you, Tom.
And, and my wife, who's been asking the same question for a few weeks.
That's great. Everybody, thank you very much, have a great night and be safe.
You too. Later.